Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Please be seated. Let the record reflect that Brad Tucker, Dana Kerr, and Larry DeMoss are here in person. And I'll let you see the audience, and they can see you so that they know that you are here. This Jimmy Durnall is here as well. Angie Jacobs could not make it this evening, so we wish that she recovers quickly. And so we will move right into the must-hang moment. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, yes. You know, I guess I probably say it every month because all of our schools are so amazing. But if you haven't had a chance to go up into our Edgewood Early Childhood Center and see the really cool things that are happening, you should try to do that. Tonight, we have Heather Kinsick, our director of the preschool, here with some of her staff, and they're going to make a presentation for us.
So I asked a couple of our teachers, these two teachers teach full-day pre-K, and they have been doing a clothing and sewing unit with their preschoolers. They did a lot of really cool projects. And the way that our curriculum is designed is that the teachers can design units of study and study a specific topic for four to six weeks. And they're able to work on those academic and social-emotional skills within that content. It's not all about learning how to sew or learning about clothing, but they're learning all of those other skills that preschoolers need through these units of study. So they've put together a presentation with some pictures and videos and some of the things that they were able to target with their students during this unit. This is Alex Green and Stephanie Namesh.
Ready? All right. Okay, I'm gonna let the pictures do most of the speaking. So this first picture, just before we get started. Ms. Hatomi is in, actually, Alex's class, but I asked her if she would come and teach the kids how to do an origami hat. So we did that, and it's actually hard to find newspapers, by the way. So if you have newspapers, we'll take them for our meal. So moving on. Okay. So this is just kind of the nuts and bolts of the Indiana Early Learning Foundations. And I won't go too deep down into that, but this, the why do we teach the orders? There's always the need for the why are we doing it? And then anchoring our study on that. So confidence, increasing independence and autonomy, which is so important at this age. Fostering creativity. I don't know if you guys can see this. So encouraging patience and discipline and perseverance, big one there. Communication process, lots of multi-layered instructions, following directions. So temporal, spatial, all that kind of stuff happens here. And then creating opportunity for planning and problem-solving, and then engages both brain hemispheres. And then that moves into measuring, estimating, sort of making a plan and then using those measurements. Also a valuable skill or trade. And to add on to that, I think it also added a connection to some of the kids to like their grandparents, or to an aunt, or to a mom, or somebody else who did sewing. And so we've got lots of cool stories from different kids on that. And then on to the next one right there, the connection to heritage and multi-generational activity. And then overall focus of process over product. So in preschool, if you see something super cute, probably not the process, it was a product. So they're just working through learning how to do things. And then this is really good for different colors, textures. And then the self-regulation that this allows so that they can have their emotional state, but through their repetitive motions, the creative process really brings around a calming sort of sense of self. And then, let's see, volume? Is the volume over there? Oops. What am I doing?
I don't know.
You can't hear it, but this is Nash, and he's telling us about his creative process as we're doing this. You can hear him? He's got a lot to say. At one point, he tells me, Nova stuff, this is how you do it. So he's like... So also with this project, there's a lot of scaffolding. I don't know if you can tell that's happening. There's some that are smaller pieces, smaller stamps that they're using, so you can kind of see that.
For fine motor development.
Yeah, for the fine motor development. There's one, the last kiddo is just a super, super proud moment. There's Ledger. Okay, right here, at the start of the year, he wouldn't touch the paint. This child would not touch paint. And now he's like squeezing it everywhere and just going for it. So that was a super proud moment, just to sit back and watch his confidence. Anyways, okay, so you get the point, right? Lots of cuteness, lots of creativity and hard work. And then the next project that we did was tie-dye. So we had tie-dye shirts. They got to vote on the colors. We made the tie-dye bath. Stephanie and I did that because of the heat, but they were very respectful and careful with safety. They did the rubber bands on the T-shirts, and some of them had an easier time with that. So that also was a creative process of choosing the different shapes that you could make with the rubber bands. And then they got to choose their colors, so they voted on these colors as a class. And then they had to let it sit, which is, you know, delaying some gratification. So lots of patience building here. And then rinse and wash. And I literally made them hand-wash it, which was fun. They were ready to get into it. And then they were hanging, and they got to dry. And then, here's a couple more of the pictures of our process. And look at all the different things just from that that came out of it. So, super proud of these guys. And then the next project we did was a Japanese tie-dying technique. The shirobe is what it's called. There's different ways to do it. We just took some old blocks that we had and rubber bands, and then they folded it, and then they wrapped them up, which is a lot of work, but they did it. And then we let them sit in the dye bath, and they got to see what that pattern looked like. And then these are just some sort of closing moments from my study. We used a sewing machine. I taught them how to hang up clothes on hangers. And then we did little fun projects of just like different ways of getting dressed. So this one in the middle is them like dressing up some animals. So they were cutting and dressing them up, and then, of course, we need to play dress-up. And your turn, Alex.
And my class kind of went a different way with the project. We went quilting, fabric, more of that side of things, patterning, shapes recognition, all of that. This particular thing, they were determining how many of which shape, and how many triangles fit into another triangle, how many into a rectangle and to a square. And they spent a good hour trying to do that with each other that particular day. We've done a couple other things with that. We have a book just about different quilts and different quilt artists and fabric and fiber artists, and they saw all the possibilities. So we did some paper quilts. We did one big, giant paper quilt for the class with National Park pictures on it, which didn't get a picture of. And then we went into our stuffy project. And this year's class voted on stuffies. In the past, we had, their big project was to make bags. One year it was bean bags. So as it's evolved, each class gets to vote on what they want to do. This year, they wanted stuffies. And they each took the time to design them. They did multiple plans and how that worked out. So they also realized all the different ways of choice and fabric that there was that was donated to us, and how to sew the bags with the sewing machine, how to sew and glue, because we use fabric glue, how to keep the hair on. Because there was some that got real detailed. And these guys did an amazing job, and then they learned how, the plan doesn't always go. So some of the kids were a little disappointed. Oh, my ears didn't come out. Oh, my legs didn't come out quite right. But they learned to love it. These guys all took them home. I would have brought them to show everybody, but they could not wait to take them home and show everyone in their family. So we have some unicorns, some unicorn cats, quite a few stingray. We have, one of these is a roly-poly that actually rolls up, which was a very important feature to that child. We have so many different things. I mean, he wanted a bus and found construction fabric. And they also did hand-sewing on parts of it, and then they used the machine on the other parts. And they learned all the parts of the machine and couldn't wait to tell me all the parts and how are you keeping your fingers safe when we're all touching things? So we had to learn all the safety features. This was part of their weaving project with it. We did bird homes and feeders, and just basically extra yarn was given to the birds to create nests in the springtime. And there was multiple layers of beds and things because the birds needed more beds. And they sewed it. They spent two days just on the carpet, building, weaving, trying to keep that going, and hand-sewing a bunch of things to put up near them. So there's lots of things in the tree, off of the playground on our side, so we can still see it. And a bunch of our friends lovingly showing me they can use the sewing machine safely and not put their fingers in inappropriate places. And yeah, the conclusion, we just...
Yeah, the conclusion is preschool is the best.
Yeah. They did a great job. I don't know. Yeah.
I'll tell you what, that was exciting. I'm just sitting here mesmerized by those projects and thinking, I was making real connections between those projects and the Ready Schools projects we do at the elementary, junior high, and high school. That is exciting, folks.
Thank you very much. It definitely is wonderful to see how elaborate the kind of things are that these little ones can do. So thank you so much for working so hard with them. Are there any visitors? No visitors? Visitors' comments? So we'll move into the consent agenda. And we have the approval of minutes for the March 27th regular board meeting. For financial, we have the March 2023 Treasurers Report. And Mr. DeMoss, the claims, please.
Gross wages for March 3rd, $717,866.64. Gross wages, mini payroll for March 6th, $855. Gross wages for March 17th, $692,367.05. Gross wages for March 31st, $629,921.74. For total gross wages, $2,041,010.43. Vouchers, claims prepaid for the month of March, $1,342,027.19. Regular vouchers for April 17th, $386,121.75. Forest Hill vouchers for April 18th, $4,119.80 for a total of $1,732,268.74. And a grand total of $3,773,279.17.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeMoss. Too bad Mrs. Jacobs isn't here because we got a whole lot of donations, big donations. There's $1,000 from an anonymous donor for the Lunch Angel Fund. There's $500 from Sean and Stephanie Adams for the Junior High Robotics Club for their championship trip, which we'll hear a little bit more about here in a few minutes. And there's also $1,000 for the robotics, Junior High Robotics Championship Trip from Sherry Malamo, I hope I got that right, Revocable Trust. And there is an $8,000 donation from the following: Eric and Amy Kinzer, Jason and Jenny Mundie, Steve and Dina, Dinah, Kellums, Tony and Angie Grimes, Candy Owen, Fred and Melissa Buell, Andrew and Jennifer Benson, and Martha Daniel. And this is all to go towards the Edgewood High School Band Trailer. For personnel, D, resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves, and terminations, 1 through 10, and personnel appointments, transfers, E, 1 through 4. And we also have three out-of-state trips. But I'll take a step back on personnel. Dr. Sanders, is there anything that you would like to say towards personnel?
Yes. I'll tell you what, we, from time to time, get the opportunity to recognize some of our retirees. And tonight, we have two amazing rock stars, each in their own way, who are going into a well-deserved retirement. Kelly Faust, who has been a teacher, and most recently, last several years, are reading, are Title I reading interventionists. She has been a teacher for 16 years, and we are certainly going to miss her. I really don't know how Brenda's going to replace her experience and knowledge, but we're going to give it our best. And then Mick Hammett, as you all know. Mick, having been a teacher, coach, and athletic director for 42 years, and you've often seen Mick running all over campus, trying to support our athletes and our teams. And so I just really wanted to highlight both Kelly and Mick tonight.
Thank you. Yes, two very important people to the corporation, as you say, will be difficult to replace. And for the out-of-state trips and overnight field trips, there are three. The Edgewood High School Girls Basketball Team, an overnight field trip to Vincent's University for camp. The Edgewood Junior High School Robotics Team for out-of-state trip to Dallas for the Robotics World Championship. And the Edgewood High School Band overnight to Vincent's University for band camp. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so two of these, the Girls Basketball Team at Edgewood High School and the state champion marching Mustangs will be going to their respective camps. Both of them will be at Vincent's University. The Girls Basketball Camp will be June 18th through the 21st. And the marching band will be at Vincent's for their camp, July 16th through the 21st. But I would like to ask Kelly Grimes to come up. And Kelly's not only going to talk about the trip to Dallas, but she's going to talk a little bit how they got to go to Dallas.
Yes, so we are going to Dallas on, let's see, we'll be there from April 30th to May 2nd for the World Championship. And we're taking seven students. A few of the students who couldn't, who went to Iowa are not able to go, so we picked up a few alternates. And we got there because we outlasted a lot of other teams. We were on a waiting list, and I put two teams on there, and one got the call. And I begged and begged and pleaded for the other, but they only took one. So we are getting really excited. Matter of fact, they're over fundraising right now at the track meet, doing their bake sale. And we're just really looking forward to going, and we're super excited to have all of your support.
That is so exciting.
Yeah.
Well, and they happen to have a pretty talented coach and teacher leading the way.
And I do too. Mrs. Hanson and myself, yeah.
This is exciting. A lot of times when these trips come up, I want to evoke the superintendent's role and say, I think I need to go.
We've got an extra seat, I'm sure.
I've been to the state championship up at Lucas Oil Stadium, and that was pretty amazing in itself. So it's pretty cool. I'm excited for them. Can't wait to hear what they've learned and their experiences.
Do you know if they've filled the position of announcer?
That'd be lovely. We have a seat for you, too. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Gosh, that is just great. Robotics program has just been growing leaps and bounds, and we're just so proud of our staff and the students for the hard work that they put in. It is a lot of hard work, a lot of creative thinking, so we appreciate that. So this being the consent agenda, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move we accept the...
I have a question to approve consent generally as a question.
I'll second it.
Move and second it. Since Mr. Durnall is by video, we will need to do a roll-call vote tonight on each item. So Mr. Tucker? Mr. Durnall?
Yes.
Mr. DeMoss?
Yes.
And Mr. Kerr is a yes as well. So the consent agenda passes with a 4-0 vote. And now we have the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Matt?
So you guys should have cash flows there in front of you. Really, in totality, there's not a lot that changed across the board, but we'll just run through some things here quickly. I updated the education fund report just to reflect the most up-to-date Form 54, which is that monthly update that state gives on tuition support. So this reflects that as far as looking at what our state tuition support looks like for the rest of April, May, and June. Did not touch July through December. We're getting close to that point, right? Legislature is getting ready to make some decisions, so we'll see where that goes. I have seen some of the state runs on some of the stuff that they've put out, but I've kind of held for a minute until I see where it actually lands. Investments still stayed high, which is a great thing for us, and expenses were extremely close, which they have been. If you look at the year-end, again, not much has changed from what last month was. It's only a couple thousand dollar difference from where we were last month as far as the year-end projection. Not going to say much about debt service, other than debt service, nothing changed, no expenses, no revenue. And again, that's normal and planned. Operations Fund, again, stayed relatively close to where we had projected last month. March's year-end numbers were, March's numbers, again, very close. We are expecting the buses that we ordered all the way in spring of last year to show up here in the next couple of weeks. Imagine that. And so they will either roll in here, right here at the end of April or in May. And so depending on when they roll in and we pay for them, you'll see the claims number adjust in operations quite a bit just because of those expenses. But again, not much has changed in totality from what it is that you look at from last month. It's really stable from what I presented to you last month.
Any questions from this third one? All right. And next, we have the proposed timetable of possible bonding. And for that, we have Jacob McClellan here this evening, and I'll let Dr. Sanders introduce.
Yeah, this is an informational item for the board tonight. I think it was over a year ago, about this time last year, when we were in the middle of a facility study conducted by Lancer Architect Firm. And since that time, we've had numerous meetings and some work sessions to review that study and identify needs for future construction projects. And so we're to that point now where we would like to start the process for securing construction bonds. And Jacob McClellan from Boys McKenney &amp; Evans, they represent us as our bond counsel. And so appreciate Jacob taking his evening to be here tonight and going through the process for you.
Yes, thanks for having me. And I know we kind of talked through this at the work session a little bit, but just high level, I know you were looking at something up to $40 million potentially. And based on the projects that you all have, and I know you're kind of finalizing some of the numbers with Skilman still, that timetable in front of you, though, outlines the process that we would follow. Due to the debt limitation issues and to preserve your general obligation bond capacity, this financing would proceed through your building corporation as a lease financing. And due to the anticipated size of two of the proposed projects, the timing is very similar to what you guys have done on your prior lease financings, except there are two additional public hearings that have to be held at the front end. So we would hold those two public hearings first. At the second public hearing, we'd also have 1028 hearings. In Indiana, you have to have a 1028 hearing if you're going to have a project that's costs more than $1 million, that's going to be payable from bonds that are payable from property taxes. Then after the preliminary determination hearings would be held, we'd put out a notice on your behalf. That starts a 30-day period. These, two of the projects that you're looking at are a size that could be subject to a petition or remonstrance process if a qualifying petition were received. Qualifying petition would have to be filed by the lesser of 500 taxpayers and/or registered voters in your territory, or 5% of registered voters. But the draft timetable anticipates that we don't receive that sort of a petition. If you did, that would probably add 90 to 120 days on top of the timetable. We could help to push through that a little bit quicker, but I wouldn't want to count on, you know, folks outside of our reach, the county, to be super quick, especially they probably don't get very many of those. So anyways, to get back to it, then once we're through those steps, then we go through the lease authorizing steps, which you guys have been through before. There's a notice that has to go out 30 days before you hold public hearings on the projects related to the amendment to the lease. If you'll recall, the Building Corporation is a holding corporation that issues bonds on your behalf. You guys have two leases in place with them right now. And every time we do a project, the place where we do the project gets purchased by the Building Corporation or is already purchased, and we execute an amendment to your lease where the payments under the lease line up with the payments on the bonds. And the lease is the way for you all to levy property tax to make the payment on the bonds. So then assuming you all and then the Building Corporation would meet at the same time, approve the lease, then you execute the lease, then another notice goes out, and there's another 30-day period where folks could remonstrate against the lease. During that time, we would prepare form bond documents for your review. We'd work with Christine for that and have her review those as well. And Stiefel would work on marketing documents. And then we would come back for authorization for the bond documents and have the Building Corporation meet at the same time or right around the same time to authorize those. And then we would work with Stiefel and you all to figure out when you truly need funds. Often, you get through the authorizing process and you kind of sit on... Often you get through the authorizing process and you kind of sit on the authorizations and maybe wait until later in the year to issue bonds. Or Stiefel could advise you, if for some reason rates are lower right when we get through, then, you know, there might be an opportunity to issue them sooner. But they would advise you and Dr. Sanders and Mr. Irwin on that. So we would anticipate, though, if we follow this timetable, that you could have funds available. We would have a sale of the bonds in early August with funds available in mid to late August. But for tonight's meeting, this is just really a notice and just kind of letting you know that we're starting the process. I think historically, your board has always wanted to know that, hey, that there's a process here that's going to start, we're going to start moving down this process so that you don't see notices in the paper and say, well, what is this? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I guess I would note that Stiefel's not here, but I think the idea here with the projects is to keep the tax rate level or maybe even lower the tax rate a little bit, so.
Any questions? No. And yes, we have made a commitment to the community to try our best to maintain a stable tax rate. And if we can go so far as wring it down, we would love to be able to do that, too. So Stiefel, the financial advisors are working very hard to see what our options are that way.
You guys are in a great position. I have some other clients that would love to be in the position that you are as far as your flexibility that you have, so.
I just want to mention, just to show the... Jacob, before the meeting, I got my tax bill in the mail today, like everybody else. And it, my tax bill went up, of course, but it was because of the assessed value going up by about ten percent. But all the taxing authorities' rate went down on all the different ones, which I thought was kind of interesting. And hopefully, we can continue to bring our tax rate down year by year and be good stewards of the taxpayer money.
And the projects that we're looking at would involve all of our schools. As I said earlier, we really work hard to make sure that we make the best use of taxpayer money. So we take a lot of time to study that, to maximize the benefits for our students. And that's the way we've always done things. That's the way we will always do that in the future. So just wanted to make sure we got that stated tonight, too.
And we've actually been doing quite a bit lately with the GO bonds and other things. We may want to think about putting something together about what we've already been able to accomplish with, in the last several years so that the community knows that, you know, what we're doing.
Yeah, we're working on a showcase for this fall to highlight not just the facilities, but how we're using the facilities. Involve students in that showcase so they could demonstrate how, what they're learning and what they're doing and how it's preparing them for life after high school.
I would recommend having Nash do some demonstrations of block. I think that would be, that'd be a selling point.
Yeah, of course, we do quite a bit of things that can't be seen with HVAC and stuff like that, that, you know, that are the bones of our buildings. And not very glamorous, but definitely necessary. And we've been doing a good job of tackling some of those things as well, so.
Well, I think it's important to remember that, to me, they're still the new buildings, but the primary and the intermediate schools are over twenty years old now. So they have some, they are showing their age a little bit.
Yes, yes. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing with us. All right. Next item is the consideration to approve the purchase of a carpet extractor. And for that, we'll turn to Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so a little over a year ago, probably a little more than that now, we received a Monroe County Health Department grant that allowed us to continue to update the cleaning equipment that we have here at the school. Obviously, that's used every day and regularly throughout the summer cleaning process, whatever that might be. The piece of equipment that we're looking to buy is a very expensive piece of equipment. It's a carpet extractor. Arnold, the custodial team, have been working hard on testing out different machines, finding things that are going to suit our needs. And so what we were recommending is to purchase the Tenet R-14 ride-on extractor, which is a purchase price of twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is covered by the grant that we got from the Monroe County Health Department. So we are excited to get that in. It's in stock, so we can get it in to make sure that it's going to be available for our summer cleaning schedule, which obviously, there's a lot that gets done over the summer. It's a pretty tight schedule. And so it's nice that that will be in stock in order for us to be able to get that stuff done. So with that, I'm asking for your approval of the Tenet R-14 ride-on extractor.
I move purchase of the carpet extractor. I second.
Move and second. Any questions?
Is that used, Mr. Irwin, for both buildings combined? Or is it just specific for one?
They each have, the EIS and then EPS both have one. This one would be for EPS. We're in the middle of getting another grant, round of that grant, which we would look to buy one for EIS as well, the next round of grants. So each building has their own.
Are they both of the same age and condition right now?
Yeah, the EIS one is needing to be replaced here soon. And so that's what we'll look to purchase with that next round of grant dollars.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anything further? Again, by roll call vote, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Dernell?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Yes.
And Mr. Kerr is yes as well. So the motion to purchase the carpet extractor passes with zero. Next up is a consideration to approve the True Green Lawn Treatment Agreement. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so the reason this one is coming to you is it is an agreement. It is less than ten thousand dollars. It comes in at six thousand one hundred dollars. But this is for the treatment of all of our athletic fields across the corporation to make sure that they are upkept in the way that we need to for playability and for our athletes. And so this is the agreement that allows that schedule of when they come around and treat the ball fields and that sort of thing. So with that, I'm asking for your approval for the True Green Service Agreement for our athletic fields.
Any motion?
Go ahead. Was this, is this something we've done in the past? I had not seen this before, that's why I didn't know.
We typically have not done one for the athletic fields. This has been something that we've done in-house efforts to try to keep the fields where we want them to be. But it's gotten to the point that it hasn't worked the way we want it to work. So this is that next logical step to bring in an outside company that will come in and take care of the fields for us in that way as far as treating for weeds and different things like that.
What we use that on forty-six at the, where the Boys and Girls Clubs at for the fields out there?
These are, this is for our athletic fields specifically. Arnold works on a separate one that we typically bring to you guys, which is for our other public spaces around the corporation. He's working on that one right now as well.
So because the actual soccer field, all the softball?
All the softball fields, all the baseball fields, yep.
Okay, all right. I move approval of the agreement with True Green.
Does that have a second?
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other questions?
So we are talking about including the fields below the soccer field? The bulk is down?
Yep.
Yeah, because I thought we were trying to develop a grass infield on one of them.
Yeah, they need a little work right now, don't they?
Yeah, they don't look as bad as they did. And I saw they have completed the fence on the very back field.
Yep, getting the scoreboard put up, the fence being completed, getting those fields where they need to be for our junior high teams as well, yeah.
It is needed. We've had, to use a lot of volunteer work to try to keep these fields in order as well. So, well, our volunteers didn't take care of lawn treatment things. They do take care of the grassy areas. And of course, our maintenance department does, too. But some of the fields require much more often to be addressed. So this will, this will actually help them in their endeavors, so that's good. So any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Dernell?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr is aye as well. So the motion passes to approve the True Green Lawn Treatment Agreement. Now we have consideration to approve an addendum to the Boys and Girls Club Facility Use Agreement. And again, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this is an addendum that I worked with Christine on with the Boys and Girls Club for our facility use agreement that we have with them for our facility on forty-six. The parameters of the addendum outlines just their ability to make improvements to our facility with our approval. Right now, we're working through the construction putback from the water pipe burst that we had over Christmas break. And we're working on getting everything put back the way that it needs to be put back, which is also cleaning up and freshening up those buildings. The insurance claim covers a good portion of what was going on, but some of those rooms, part of it, insurance doesn't cover. And so because of the funds that we're investing into the facility, they were able to get a Lilly Grant Fund that helps bring some matching dollars to invest into the facility as well. As we update a lot of the different areas, that whole front area of the building, where Head Start used to be, that part of the building, and then some of the adjacent classrooms around the side and the staff lounge area were affected by that pipe burst. And so all of those areas will be freshened up and look new with new flooring, paint, cove base, ceiling tile, all the things that would look in there aesthetically. But this also will allow us to address other portions of the facility as we look at some of those other long-term uses that we're putting into place out there in that building. So with that, I'm asking for your approval of this addendum that allows us to approve improvements that, to our facility, done by outside, which would be Boys and Girls Club. And again, it does outline that these are things that stay with us even if they don't use the facility in the future.
We have motion.
I move approval of the agreement, the amendment to the agreement. I second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions?
I see the Boys and Girls Club was involved in all this.
Yeah, this is something that...
And the flexibility for them down the road.
Yeah, this was something that evolved from some conversation that we had with Jeff Baldwin, their executive director there for the Boys and Girls Club. And was something that he was definitely in favor of doing as we tried to expedite the process of getting some of these things done. And he was one of the people that approached us about being able to put up some of those matching dollars to help with renovations to those areas.
Okay. Further? Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Dernell?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr is aye as well. So the Facility Use Addendum is passed, the four oh. Consideration to approve asset technology agreement. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this is one that comes with, working with Arnold. HVAC is a mysterious world when you think about all of the different parts that go into it, whether that's the computer systems, the larger pieces of equipment, or down to the individual room controllers. This agreement with asset technologies allows them to rebuild those individual room controllers. And we would send those off, they repair those, and they send those back to us. We are at a place where some of those obviously are needing done. And so this agreement Arnold felt like was a good way to start out as far as when we have one go down, they can rebuild it, send it back and get it back in use. We'll hold an extra one back, and then they hold extra ones as well to make sure that when one goes out of place, we can get another one back up in service to not have delay in effect. And if push came to shove, we could also have some portable units to put in a room if we needed to. But again, this allows them to get that done. It also comes with warranties as well, which is similar to that of buying a new one. And it's more cost-effective for us at this time. And so Arnold felt like this was a good route to go right now. And after we looked into it, we feel like this agreement will help us out as we move forward with addressing some of those individual room controllers as they go down or need rebuilt. So with that, I'm asking for your approval of the Asset Technologies Agreement.
I move approval of the Asset Technologies Agreement.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dernell seconds. Any discussion? Hearing that, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Dernell?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Yes.
And Mr. Kerr is aye as well. And so the Asset Technology Agreement is approved. The next is to award the bid for the rebidding of the remodel of the old administration administrative offices. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so I had Robin send you a copy of VPS Architecture's letter. It's stuck in the board packet. I also gave you an updated copy of just the drawings of the renovations that would be done, which is turning the old administration offices into the new home of the Edge for the high school. We worked with them. They made some adjustments to the plan. We put everything out for rebid, like you guys had approved a while back. Ninety Construction Corporation was a low bidder with a base bid amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is eighty-plus thousand dollars less than what the original bid came back in, which is a great thing for us as a school corporation. There was one alternate on that bid, and we're not recommending to take that alternate just yet, which is to finish some work that was done by another construction company on the backside of the junior high for the outside dining area. So with VPS, as you see Georgia's recommendation letter, we're asking for your approval to award the bid to Ninety Construction Corporation for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Accept the motion?
I make a motion to accept the new plans presented this evening.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I was not, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but what would the capacity be for the Edge when this is finished?
The individual room, I think it's, the capacity of the individual room, I want to say it's over twenty.
Okay.
But there's the different spaces in the area. So when you look in that initial area, when you walk in, there's that where Robin's office used to be. That'll turn into an office space and a small, small meeting space, depending on how they use that. You've got the lunchroom area, a dining type area. You have the conference area to the right where Brittany and all them. So we've got the different separate areas. But that large classroom space is a combination of what was Dr. Sanders' old office, my office, and that hallway, as well as Debbie Tate's office, all in that area combined into one large space.
So there would be some flexibility if...
There's definitely flexibility.
Twenty is, should be plenty, but...
Yeah, there's definitely more capacity than what there is now.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So where the old boardroom is at, that is going to be flex space?
Right now, that can, that'll be storage space that we use. So it'll be the storage space that we have, whether it's with documents and stuff where we keep different things, also where we're doing document shredding and file uploading and all of that stuff.
It is secure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then that, the next part, where all the bus stuff is at, that's all done, right?
Yeah, so that's just...
I know that's the biggest chunk of that, but it's...
Yeah, they just throw that picture in there to show us how that building connects. And so part of that wall that was there in the old kitchen area across there, that part of that wall is coming down. But there's a door that closes off the area from the Edge and that other area. Those will be completely separated. So we're not going to have staff and students intermingling in that area. There will be door separation and security separation there in those areas.
And there's still, on that bigger area, there's still, is there still an upstairs being used over there?
Mm-hmm.
We still have documents and so forth?
Yeah, we have some stuff different places. And yeah, we have to continue to go through all of that stuff, yeah, lighten the load up there.
Okay, all right.
And the neat thing about this is that, you know, one of the issues, it's always a dilemma for an alternative school because it's always best for an alternative school to be outside of the high school, to have their own environment. But you also worry about security with the alternative school being too far away from the high school. And the beauty about this is that they'll have their own facility. It'll be close. It'll be something that the Edge students will be proud of and will meet their needs and will be able to just do a better job to assure their safety while we're providing them with an alternative education.
All the pre-existing technology will be repurposed, right? With the technology line and so forth, but not have to redo all the technology?
No, not at all. Rick, what changes do we need to make to that building for technology for the Edge? Rick, what changes do we need to make to that building for technology for the Edge?
We're going to improve the Wi-Fi and put in data drops.
Okay.
For cats that, just say that there was some new Wi-Fi and data drops.
Correct, correct.
Can you think further? Okay. Mr. Tucker?
One more question.
Okay.
This is what the Edge and the administration is looking to do, right? They've been involved in this whole process?
Yes. We've had a number of meetings with Mr. Ackerman. We came over and went through the Edge, and he made some suggestions, and we accommodated those suggestions. And I know Mr. Ackerman checked with the Edgewood staff also.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just so that we're clear, this would be awarding the bid for the rebid to Ninety Construction for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We will bid on the contract after this, two separate items. So no further questions? Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Durnall?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr's eye as well. And so the bid has been awarded to Ninety Construction, the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Vote for to zero. And now the consideration is toward the actual construction contract, to approve the construction contract with Ninety Construction. Mr. Irwin, do you have anything further?
Yeah, so we worked with VPS, they worked up the contract based on what our typical contracts look like. We sent that over to Christine Ferguson Law, she made several recommendations, we made adjustments to that contract. We also made sure to notate some of the things in there, because this project is being paid for through ESAR dollars, some of the rules and regulations that Ninety Construction has to follow in order to meet those requirements. So we made sure to specify that in the contract, so not only were they in the bid specifications, we also refer to those in the actual contract with Ninety Construction to make sure that we meet all the federal procurement guidelines, and that we don't have any issues with State Board of Accounts on the audit purposes of how we spend those ESAR dollars. So we made special considerations to make sure that that was definitely included. And so we also made an adjustment with some of the stuff in there that had to do with insurance coverages. That was a good catch on the fine print by Christine as well. And so this contract is reflective of the award that you just approved with Ninety Construction for that remodel of the old admin offices.
So do we have a motion to approve the contract for Ninety?
Move, do we award the contract? Okay.
Mr. Durnall moved, and-
I'll second.
Mr. Demoss seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Durnall?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr's eye as well. And so the contract has been approved for Ninety Construction.
I'll take it.
Next, we have the consideration to approve the United Way report. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so Vicki Coffey, our Director of Nutrition, heads up our, I'm Jill Cronin, head up our United Way campaign, and we receive about three thousand dollars from United Way. And as part of receiving those funds, Vicki has to submit a report, and that report has to be approved by the board, and that report was in your board packet for you to review. So we're simply asking for you to approve that report tonight.
I move approval of the United Way report. I second.
Move and second. Any questions? Discussion?
I'm relieved to know that the school assistance fund is not on the terrorist watch list.
That didn't come up on my pack today, so I think we're good.
Right.
Okay.
I enjoyed reading some of the tidbits from how the grant was used. I thought that was neat from each of the schools, so I thought that was nice.
Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Durnall?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr's eye as well. And the United Way report is approved. Now we have three items Jennifer Anderson's with us this evening to go over. One is to create an instructional coach position, another is a mental health coordinator position, and finally, a student support provider position. Ms. Sanders?
I had to bring all my notes, it's way too much to remember off the top of my head. Well, I'll start with the instructional coach position. We are thrilled to have been asked to join the Indiana State Literacy Cadre, which is the second generation of this grant. Eli Lilly and the state have coordinated, and Eli Lilly, their foundation, has agreed to put sixty million dollars into early literacy, and the state has responded to that by offering these literacy cadre grants with the implementation of the science of reading. So the science of reading is a body of evidence collected over the last fifty years that is rooted in evidence-based instructional practices and approaches, as well as evidence-based instructional practices and approaches. It's a systematic way that the literature has told us what actually works, based on students' brain development and their ability to understand and process literacy, both reading and writing. And so we started this journey, Brenda, October-ish, somewhere around there, we found out about it. In November, I invited an IU professor, a special education professor who focuses in on the science of reading, and she's a member of the Reading League, which is a premier science of reading group. And she came and presented to both EIS and EPS staff that are highly involved in early literacy. And she gave two presentations, two half-day presentations, on what the science of reading actually is and what it is not, because there's a lot of misnomers out there about what the science of reading is. It is not a curriculum, but it is an evidence-based and research-based approach, which is very systematic in the overall literacy structure for students in the early learning years, how to learn to read and write. We were thrilled to be able to apply, to join the cadre, and we were accepted into the cadre. So with that, we received an unbelievable amount of professional development for our teachers and staff in grades K through two, in the implementation of the science of reading and what that looks like in our schools. EPS is already ahead of the game, some of that is already being implemented actually across K through five in Orton Gillingham, which is an approach to reading that is designed to not only help early intervention students learn how to read, but also is one of the premier interventions for students who have specific learning disabilities or have been outside medically diagnosed with dyslexia. So we have everybody trained in both buildings on Orton Gillingham, so we feel we're real excited because we're kind of already ahead of the game. With this grant, we were able to hopefully hire an instructional coach. That instructional coach will specifically work with teachers on the implementation, the monitoring, the progress monitoring of the data collection on the science of reading and how our students are doing, under the guidance of Cell through the University of Indianapolis and the state of Indiana. The research has only grown in its breadth and its depth in that the state has made this an early literacy priority. The state is moving this way, and we're excited to kind of be on the ground floor with the help of them through this grant and not left on our own to be able to figure out how to implement the science of reading and utilize all of the different approaches that's going to work best for our students. So I'm asking for consideration for the creation of the instructional coach for K through two for the literacy cadre grant.
Awesome. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the creation of the position for the instructional coach. I second.
Move and second. Any discussion?
I'm just excited that we've taken a very positive step forward in literacy, because it's something that has been needed for a long time. I'm just hoping the state, I remember early in my career, there was an effort that was designed to improve graduation by, in putting something in primary grades. Four years later, graduation rates hadn't improved, so they dropped it. So I hope they don't do anything stupid like that, but I don't have a lot of faith.
We all do.
We're really lucky to be in this cohort. I think we're going to be a leg up on other school corporations being in cohort number two, I believe it is. And, you know, because the state is moving towards this direction, the science of reading, and so hopefully, we're going to be out in front of the state, and we're looking for great things to happen. As you know, reading is, just is a key that unlocks so many other things so that the students can be successful.
In the funding for this position, is that all by the grant, or is it-
No, it is not. So the first year, two-thirds of the position is paid by the grant, a third is paid by the school corporation, and then a third is paid by the grant the next year, and two-thirds will be paid by the school corporation. And then at that point in time, we'll have to make a determination if that's a position that is necessary and needed to keep on board, or if we would revert back to getting what we need, and now we can kind of take it amongst ourselves and implement that from what we've learned.
And I think they're pretty wise in setting that up that way, that the school corporation can ease into taking on that position. It's not like we're going to fund the whole thing, and then all of a sudden, you have to fund the whole thing, you know? We'll be able to ease into it.
They'll be okay if they wanted to fund this for two years. We wouldn't stop.
We wouldn't complain.
Right.
No. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was important for the community to know where the funds come from for these, so.
Absolutely.
Any further questions?
How many, do you know how many school corporations are, we're in the first cohort, and now that are in the second cohort?
I believe there are fifty-six in the first cohort, there's over a hundred in the second cohort. So it's growing. I believe that there will be one more cohort is what, Brenda, correct me, we've been on so many meetings. I believe there will only be one more cohort with the next round, so it'll be six years total of the cohorts.
So do you take, ultimately, the ultimate goal is to make this a mandate for school corporations?
That's what the writing on the wall seems to imply.
Right, okay, they're just easing us into it and dangling the carrot.
Yes.
But then it'll be a mandate, but it could be another, like Mr. Demoss said, an unfunded mandate someday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they've made, the state has made this early literacy one of their top priorities, and they, what they've done is that they have set as their top priority ninety-five percent of all third graders passing I Read Three, and part of that is using that research-based and that evidence-based approach, which is tied in with Title I, we do have to use research and evidence-based, special ed for interventions and response to intervention, we have to use evidence and research-based. So the state is really kind of getting all of their efforts together and kind of coordinating them across all of the domains, instead of having early literacy here, and then Title I stuff here, and then special ed and English language learners. So you're really starting to see kind of a systematic approach by the state as well in order to kind of tie all of those different components together, as we know what works best for students.
And the staff's jumped on board pretty well.
I would defer to Jen and Brenda on that one. They seem to respond well to the informational training sessions. They were two, two and a half, three-hour sessions, so a lot of what the staff does already regarding Orton Gillingham, we're seeing great gains with that, so.
There'll be a little bit of shifting, but not near as much as it could be, and there are, there's lots of training out there for shifting from a balanced literacy approach to the science of reading, and they're already participating in some of those webinars and those courses, so they're excited with that.
So are we.
Yeah, I cheated on this particular item and asked my wife what she thought. She says, yes, we really need this.
And, you know, the funny thing is, that body of research has been around forever. It's what most very, very good teachers, it's what most teachers already implement, so it's not something brand new. They're already doing it, they just don't know that this is what they're doing, that it's part of that body of evidence, so everyone just kind of compiled it into one nice area.
All right, anything further? Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Durnall?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr's eye as well. So we now have an instructional coach position for early literacy. Next is the mental health coordinator position.
Correct. So in December, Dr. Ormiston from IU and I wrote another grant. It's called the SMART Grant, or School-Based Mental Health Grant, with the U.S. Department of Ed, just as we did three years prior in 2019 with our Tims Grant. This grant focuses in on the training of teachers and community members in the LEAs catchment area to become school-based counselors. And so what this grant will do is help take our community members and our teachers, if they are interested, or admin, whomever is interested in these positions, and give them another skill set by paying for them to go back to school to become school counselors. Also, we'll provide our current school counselors with the opportunity to gain additional licensure or additional endorsements in the area of mental health supports, such as obtaining a licensed mental health counseling endorsement. And so in the meantime, while this is, while they are obtaining their master's in school counseling, or their LMHC, or some other endorsement, the people on this grant will be implementing those mental health supports within our schools. So they will be able to leave this grant with a master's degree at no cost to them in school counseling, which is an area that is, again, like school psychologists and social workers in high need, given the demands of the mental health crisis that we're going through at this time. They'll be able to receive all of their practicum and their internships here at RBB, under the guidance of some of our current school counselors, who have agreed to take them on when they get to that point in time. The mental health coordinator position, Dr. Ormiston and I had discussed it. We learned a lot from the Tims Grant, which helped guide and shape kind of what we're doing for this grant. So one of the things that we learned is that, given the complexities of working with elementary students, because we're going to focus on elementary at this point in time, working with elementary students, we need somebody who has a foundational understanding of how schools operate. We also need somebody who is able to effectively communicate and collaborate with outside organizations, with parents, with teachers, and be able to solve those complex problems like most school administrators do. So we felt that it was necessary to have one of these positions be a mental health coordinator position that would work in conjunction with Brenda and Jen and Andy and Matt in the elementary school, that will help coordinate all of the IU graduate students, would help coordinate the providers, that's next, on the position, and then make sure that all the services are being implemented with fidelity, the services are working within the guidelines and within the protocols and procedures of the elementary schools and what's necessary for those schools. Because what we found is, this past year, we did not have someone to help coordinate, she moved to Florida, there was nothing we could do about it. We really felt that loss, or that hole in the elementary schools. So we had a previous person, we had Tom do that prior, and that was his only job, was to be that coordinator, and so we're wanting to bring that back with this position as part of it. This person will be required to enroll in the school counseling program of their sort of choosing, we have to be kind of a little sticky on that with financing, but they will also obtain their school counseling license, they will be somebody who is also actively working with students directly and helping to manage that coordination with IU and their students and our building students together. So that's why we have created one of the five positions as a coordinator position.
Okay, do we have a motion?
We just voted on the, we both combined, both of them together?
Do we talk about the next one?
Or we have to vote on them separately?
We'll vote on them separately.
Make a motion to- I make a motion to approve the mental health coordinator position.
He can second.
Okay, Mr. Durnall seconded.
Yep.
Mr. Tucker made the motion. Discussion?
This is an additional administrative position, am I?
It's a coordinator position. We're hopefully seeking someone with an administrative license, so they can work in a little higher capacity. So if there's, you know, may, for example, if there's an IEP meeting going on, and this, the student is receiving services, and it's something that needs to be assessed, they could actually sit in as a PAR for that meeting in place of Brenda, Jen, or, or Andy. They could actually help, help manage that. They could, they could work with, with parents, they could, they could help coordinate all of those services in conjunction with, with Brenda and Jen and the activities in the building.
And the funding for this position?
100% paid for by the grant, for five years.
For five years?
Does the grant determine the, the compensation package also? Or does the school corporation work?
We work-
With the grant funds in order to come up with a compensation?
Yes, we would work in coordination with, with our current employee agreement with the association, because this, the, the people who will be employed on the grant would have to have a bachelor's minimum in the education field. So they would most likely fall under, under, I don't know what you call it.
Bargaining unit?
Bargaining unit, thanks.
Unless they already had an administrator's license?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's something that as, as we get the applicants in, we will work on an individual basis for those individuals who, who apply for the position.
You know, a few years ago, when we started our mental health program, we, we've learned a lot since then. We've learned a lot in terms of how to serve kids, but we also learned a lot about that, this field that provides mental health, that sometimes it's a challenge to find people to serve in that way. And so that's what I love about this grant, is that we could, we can hire from within, that we can take these grant dollars and take what we've accomplished with mental health to the next level. It's, whenever you're building something, which we were really building from scratch, the mental health program, you know you're going to make some adjustments along the way, and we've been able to make those adjustments, get some additional grant dollars, and we're just going to keep working at, because the better we get at it every year, the more we're meeting the needs of our students and our staffs.
So this would be training people that are, that are IU students to, to do the, to get their masters? Or community people? I thought you said?
It could be anybody from our local community, or our teachers, if they're interested in, in transitioning over to this role. They are, they are more than welcome, that's who we prefer, quite frankly, because they're familiar with the system, and it's kind of a grow your own, to give them another skill set. And a free master's degree in the process.
And that would be two community members? I mean, we're not telling them they have a school counselor job if we go through that, but they, we will help them with that education.
Exactly. They, we, just to give you some background, I've had several community members reach out to me who have degrees in education, they don't necessarily want to go into the teaching part of it, but they've kind of always held back from getting anything further as far as an advanced degree. And this is very appealing to them, because it's something that they, they're interested in, but they're not, you know, they don't want to jump back into the teaching, the teaching role. So we have several members in our community who have reached out and wanted more information on this. And we've had several teachers reach out as well, who have, who have interest as well. And, and five years, you walk away with a master's in school counseling.
I'll be interested in seeing how it and the Tims Grant people are meshed together, because I think that's going to be an interesting-
Yep.
-process going forward.
The same, the same group of IU graduate students will be essentially implementing same, the same types of services, the same types of manual, manualized-based therapies, the same types of interventions, the same types of small groups. We just had our monthly meeting for the SEL team leadership, and we set our meeting for early August in order to get the coordination with this grant, with the continuation of the Tims Grant, and how we are going to merge those, and what that looks like. So we, we actually set that all up today.
Okay.
About 12 o'clock.
What's the, is there a, an estimate on timeline? If, if somebody comes in with an education degree, but doesn't have any of the counseling coursework, about how long would we be, be looking at?
It's approximately a two to two and a half year program that they will be going through. So we would like to get these positions hired sooner than later. There are some programs that start this summer, some programs start in the fall, and so it's very feasible to work full-time or part-time. Some people have said, could it be 28 hours while I'm going through school? So those are all flexible things that we'll work through with each, each of the individuals. But they should be, if they start summer or August, they should be done within two and a half years, and then they will sit for their licensure for school counseling. And the last two and a half years of the grant, they will be licensed school counselors and working in the same capacity.
Can only those with a bachelor in education do that? Or if-
That's the minimum.
I'm sorry?
That's the minimum that they would have to have.
A bachelor, so that a bachelor's in sociology or something like that wouldn't work, or?
It, it could possibly work, what we found after talking with some of the, the IHES, the Higher Educational Institutes, that adds extra time into the program, because they have to have some of the prerequisites, which are more commonly found in the education field, rather than another type of field. So that just prolongs the timeline, so we would just prefer if there was a bachelor's in, in some area of, of education. It's not necessarily required, we would prefer that.
So if they're doing the practicums here, then we're getting kind of the benefit of them working with our students as well?
Oh, they're, they are working from day one, yes, with our students to, to be trained and start implementing some of those manualized therapies and, and small groups and, and interventions. Yep. They're starting from the get-go.
No, I have to, if you, if, if the grant in the school is putting that money into them, will there be something that will keep them here throughout the five-year timeframe? Because we're investing in them.
We are investing in them.
So is there something in the language that will keep them, as far as handcuffing, and say, you got to stay here?
After speaking with the department, the U.S. Department of Ed, because that came up-
Right.
Like, we're investing, like, two and a half, after two and a half years, can they just leave? Technically, they could leave. So what the Department of Ed has advised, this is a train your own, so we will look very heavily at those individuals who have vested interests in our community and in our school corporation will receive first priority. The agreement will be, you go through this, we expect you to stay for the length of the five years.
Right. And that's going to be spelled out to them-
Yes.
-at the time they're hired.
Yeah, so it, it will be vetted in full for people who have a very vested interest in our community and our school corporation for these positions. We're, we're not going to take that lightly, and make sure that it's the right person and the right fit.
Anything further? Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Durnall?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Mr. Kerr is aye as well. So we now have a mental health coordinator position. Next is the student support provider position.
Yes, so the student support provider positions are the, those positions, three, correct? Yes, are at least three positions, if we can, depending on where they go, it could be a fourth, but definitely three positions that would be providers of service for the students. So those are just the people who are interested in the grant, who have agreed to come on, who are going to school to get their school counseling license, they will be working in the school corporations. And then the other two positions are, the other two areas would be the additional endorsements or licensure that our current school counselors are looking to, to gain. So we have two right now who are very interested in their LMHC, their licensed mental health certificate, and so they are working right now, trying to figure out what program they're going to go into, what, what's going to be the most cost-effective for them, and what's going to work with their, with their, their current job, so.
So are these three position, positions funded for the five years?
Yes, mhm.
In full?
The entire five years.
Wow.
And the schooling and, and everything, mhm.
To, to get the, their certificate or get the masters?
To get their masters, mhm.
Okay. It'd be, it'd be great, Dr. Sanders, at some point, I'm about half-cross-eyed with what all is going on, to see a flow chart of how the whole thing works, like who, who's under who?
Yes.
Because there's so many different moving parts.
We, we've already talked about that.
Okay, okay.
We, we have a, a, I have a list that I gave to Dr. Sanders that has everything laid out, but as far as the flow chart goes-
Right.
-it is in process. I can show you what I have so far, but it's not, it's not pretty.
In line with each of the school counselors?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's there.
I'm looking forward to seeing the flow chart.
Just give me a call, and I'll send it to you, what we have so far, for a look.
I'll give you a day or two.
Or three or four, four.
Okay, alright.
Anything further?
I make a motion to approve the three support counselors, as stated.
Mr. Durnall is seconded, and anything further? Mr. Tucker?
I'm sorry, yeah, I do, I do have a question, just-
Yep.
I want to make sure I understand. We're talking about three additional positions besides the current counselors that we have?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I knew that I heard that right.
Correct.
Okay.
One more question on that, too. The ones that we currently have are funded by grants right now as well, to a point, at some point, does the corporation start absorbing the cost of this? That's, that was my biggest fear back-
After five years.
-in the day, that we'd run out of funds to keep these positions going. So are we, are some of the ones that are currently, that are going to run out of grant funding?
So our current counselors at the high school, the, the Dennis, Amy-
Right.
They're education-funded.
Right, gotcha.
The junior high is all education-funded.
Correct.
And the social work at the elementary school are, is education-funded.
But it started out grant?
Those are in place.
It started out grant funded?
No, they did not.
Okay, they did not, okay.
No, no, that's where they have always been, been paid.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
But five years down the road, yeah, we're looking at-
Correct, gotcha.
We're going to get another grant.
Yeah.
But we also, we also partner with Adult and Child.
Right.
And Adult and Child and other mental health providers have the challenge of finding enough people, or finding the people to serve in these areas. And so we'll keep using Adult and Child, but this will help us to bridge the gap where some of these mental health providers are not being able to go out there and find the appropriate people. We are finding the appropriate people from within.
Right.
And so I think this will meet a need that, that we, that we've seen over the last few years, a gap that, that we've discovered, this will meet that need and fill that gap.
So our current, current mental health, they're, we're reimbursed for Medicaid, correct?
Adult and Child, yeah.
Adult and Child, okay, but this is, this was nothing like that, though?
Yeah, we don't, RBB itself does not pay a cent for Adult and Child. We just provide the space for them to work. They bill Medicaid under their entity, and that's how they, that's how they operate, that's what they operate. Now, with some of these positions and with some of our current counselors, we do have the ability to bill Medicaid, but in order to build Medicaid in schools, you have to have those services written into an IEP. There are some students who do have those services in, because those services are being provided on a regular basis with a specific area of need related to their disability on their IEP. So we do have some of that occurring right now. As of today, that's the only way for schools to build Medicaid. There is a bill in process right now that will expand that to students under five-oh-four plans and under health plans. So we're watching that very closely, but right now, it has to be a student who has the service written into the IEP.
Yeah.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anything further? Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Durnall?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Mr. Kerr is aye as well. And now we have three student support provider positions. Okay, the next would be consideration to approve the, is it Link Tech Agreement? Link?
Mr. Irwin's going to cover this one. Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. So this was actually something that the board had looked at September of 2022, and so Vicki wanted to get started with this. It's, it's a software that works with her, her back-of-the-house inventory and her menu production needs. It helps her staff to be able to do their job more efficiently. And so as they progress through year one of that agreement, she's, it's been a good thing for them. And so she wants to move forward and have the board approve years two and three of that agreement, to be able to continue that with her staff. And so this is the proposal that you guys had seen, it's for the last two years of it, now that she's gone through the first year and said, hey, this is a good thing for me, and she wants to continue doing that. So with that, we're asking for your approval of the Link Tech Agreement for years two and three.
I move approval of the Link Tech Agreement.
I second.
Moving second. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Durnall?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Mr. Kerr is aye as well. So the Link Tech Agreement has been approved for years two and three. Next is consideration to approve the deadline date for enrollment of transfer students. Actually, just in case you're following the agenda, we're not going to cover the EIS cafeteria this evening. There's some things we just need to get completed, it's not quite ready yet. It's exciting?
Yeah.
It's a very exciting, you have-
Well, I just want to say, we're pulling the add agenda item for tonight, just because we want to make a better proposal. The project will go on still. We'll, we'll come back next month and, and have a better proposal for the board. We just had some questions about this one that we decided to take our time and make sure we do it right.
Yes, so far, what we have seen, it seems pretty exciting, so that's, I would say. Okay, so again, so the, approve the deadline date for enrollment of transfer students. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so according to Indiana Code and our own school corporation policy, the board shall establish a date by which requests to enroll a transfer student must be submitted for approval. We are required to submit this date to the state of Indiana by the end of this month. For the 2023-24 school year, I'm asking the board to approve May 22, 2024, as a deadline for accepting transfer students. Essentially, the, what we're saying is we're going to accept transfer students throughout the school year. And if you look at around the state, school corporations pick dates all throughout the school year, one, based on one philosophy or another. I would like, I believe that when we are able to get a transfer student, even in the spring, that we're able to, once they get into our school and they realize what we, what great schools we have, then I hope that we hook them then for the fall, and, and we've put our best foot forward for them, and we'll be able to make them a long-term part of the RBB family. So the date I would like the board to approve is May 22, 2024, for the 23-24 school year.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Right.
Mr. Durnall moves to approve?
I second.
And seconded. Any discussion? No, always like to have an open door policy, so, sounds good. All right, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Durnall?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr is aye as well. That is approved for O. And now to accept the number of transfer students, Dr. Sanders?
So the same school board policy, which is 5-1-1-1, also states that the school board establishes the number of transfer students that can be accepted in each building and grade level. The capacity for accepting transfer students shall be reached when the student, teacher, student-to-teacher building ratio reaches, for K2, 24 to 1, grades 3 to 5, which is EIS, 27 to 1, and then the junior high and the high school would be 30 to 1. I felt like this, using- I felt like this, using the student to teacher ratio was the best way to be able to communicate both a building and grade level number. And I also think it shows that we're we pay attention to our class sizes when we're monitoring this student to teacher ratio. So I would recommend your approval. A motion?
I make a motion to accept the number of students we bring in every year to the transfer.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. And when we talk about these transfer students, you get to determine whether you actually want to accept the particular students. It's not a mandatory that you have to accept. Right, so by practice, these requests go to the building principals, and they review each case and and make and then they approve those transfers. Just wanted to make sure people understood there's a process. There is a process, there's a form on our website that that parents have to fill out every year, even if they're accepted, they have to fill it out again for the next year. Now, we could change this these numbers. We could even change how we are coming up with these numbers anytime during the year. It's it's something that is not reported to the state, and so we can make these adjustments if necessary. Because we want to be open, we want to be open to accepting transfers, but we also don't want to create a crowded situation. So typically, what we do is we monitor that anyways throughout the school year.
One of the questions I've got within the transfers, we're talking about transfers outside of the district, correct?
Yes, these are.
Our in our in district students, if if they started at a different school within our district and they don't provide the services that they need, we have to accept them, right? We will accept them.
Oh, yeah, if they're in our district.
But but if it's reversed, and I always worry about how the funding works with that, like on count day and so forth, like if they started another school within our corporation and they can't provide the services the student needs and they come to our school, we'll welcome them, but we.
Even within our.
We have to provide.
Corporation.
Within our corporation, correct. Such such as the the.
So they were in our corporation, they started at another school.
Correct.
They live here.
Even at even at a school, it's even within our school corporation.
Right.
Such as such as down the road here.
Yes.
We will take those students up.
Yes.
Okay, how's that work as far as the student count? I mean, do we get reverse part of that money?
Well, there it's based on two count days. So that's where we get the state tuition is the count days that we have in the fall and then in February. And so if we receive a student after February, then we will not get any funds for that student from the February count, but that's where I believe we're investing in that student. So hopefully, they're here next fall and we and then we get the tuition from from them then.
But ethically, the other school does not send us the funds to finish out the year?
No.
Okay, all right, I was curious on that.
Sure. Anything further? Hey, Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Dernall?
Aye.
Mr. DeMoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr is aye as well. I will say that my I have low battery on my phone for the FaceTime, so if somebody has a cell phone charger that I could use to plug it in, that would be great. Or if we lose Mr. Dernall, we'll have to have somebody else call and set that. I have a charger in my office if somebody wants to. All right, so we'll we'll move forward. If if we lose you, Mr. Dernall, we'll.
I'd call him if you.
Take a recess until we get your battery.
I got a little bit of power, if you have to call me. I'd call him on mine if you have to.
Okay, all right. Mr. Tucker will call you if if we lose you. Okay, so the last action item of the evening is the consideration to approve the purchase of a trailer for the band program. Interestingly, we had had some donations for. Yes, already approved by the board tonight. I was contacted a few weeks ago about the number of band parents who wanted to recognize our seniors who were in the band, I think some or all of them, who have been part of two state championships. And they raised $8,000 to go towards this trailer. And they they even went out and got quotes for us. But I had the our director of transportation review those quotes to make sure we were buying the best thing, and Audrey Myers thought that we needed a trailer with a heavier axle. So we went out and got three new quotes, and actually, the quotes that were in the board packet were the original quotes. So I have I put at your desk the the new quotes, which should have been in the board packet, so I apologize for that. So what we're going to do is we're going to use $8,000, the $8,000 donated by the the band parents, and then the school corporation is going to pick up the rest. And the three quotes that we received, one from Spencer Trailers was for $10,800. We received another one from Cross Trailers for $12,058, and Dietro, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, Dietro Trailers, amount of $16,500. So we're going to go with the lowest quote of $10,800. The school corporation will pick up $2,800. We'll use the other $8,000, and we'll get a a trailer that will last a long time, not only for current students, but for hopefully students down the road. So I recommend your approval.
I move approval of the purchase of the Dark Horse 2500 trailer.
I second.
Moved and seconded, and that bid amount was for $10,800.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
I just appreciate the donations. I having been a band parent, I know how crazy band parents can be, but how proud they are of their of their children and how hard they worked to support them. I think it's just it's just really amazing that they are doing this, so.
Yeah, it's heart it's heartwarming, too, because I mean, back in the day, we'd like, on a Wednesday, like, oh, my gosh, we got to find four or five people have trailers and borrow them. And so I'm glad we have our own now.
Right.
Well, I checked with Mr. Wells, because we have a number of trailers bid. I checked with Mr. Wells to see if is this indeed a need? He said, oh, yes, he said, there are some weekends where between the show choir and band and I don't know who all uses them, but they're they're all out on some weekends. And so, yeah.
It's good marketing, too, going down the highway with the Edgewood logo.
And $8,000 raised by, I mean, that's.
That's pretty cool, yeah.
Pretty good sum of money.
Yep.
Yeah, that that's very impressive. Really appreciate those families stepping up for that. That's awesome.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Larry, you made the motion.
I made the motion.
Do you second?
Okay, sorry.
Oh, Jimmy got the seconded. I heard it come from my left side.
Right, okay, yeah.
So I knew we had a second, I just. So Jimmy was the second on that. Thank you, Christine, for making sure we got that on the record. Anything further? Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Dernall?
Yes.
Mr. DeMoss?
Aye.
And Mr. Kerr is aye as well. And so we now have approval of the band trailer purchase. Now we'll move into the superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders? First of all, I just want to thank the board. I know I know how lengthy sometimes our board packets are. And so the weekend before the the week before the the board meeting, I know you're doing a lot of reading, and and I appreciate the questions that Matt and I get because it gives us a chance to view these proposals and these projects and these action items in a different light with something maybe we didn't think about. So I know we had a number of questions for tonight, and I just want to tell you, Matt and I, we do appreciate that. It pushes us a little bit to work a little bit harder, but we don't mind that at all. Hey, I just want to do a little bragging for my report tonight. First of all, as I'm sure you've heard, but I just wanted to at a public board meeting congratulate our Edgewood High School winner percussion for winning back to back state championships. I got to see the the community performance, and I mean, it's just as precise as watching the band in the fall, you know? They're just they just are talented kids, and it's exciting to see them working together. I wanted to mention our high school show choir, sophisticated lady sang the national anthem at the Indianapolis Indians game last Thursday, April 13th, and wow, they they sounded really good. I was I was really proud, and I I couldn't see, so I went on the field to help take a if you want to take a picture, well, they kicked me off the field. So I had to go stand behind the kids, so all I could I could hear them, which was sounding awful, like awesome, like I said, but I I got to watch Brian Paulson, and man, he leads with passion. If you ever see a Brian show choir performance, now usually at the contest, he's behind the group playing the piano or something. So this is the first time I got to see him out in front, and he just was really into it and got to sit there and hang out with the kids during the the game. And I I checked with the kids to see if they got their e-learning lessons done that day. So I also want to congratulate Edgewood Primary School for another great kindergarten welcome week. The way that EPS does the gathers this information from our kindergarten, future kindergarten parents and shows off to school, just the welcome week, the way they schedule that, I hear parents from other school corporations wishing that their school corporation did it like doesn't did it like IS EPS does. You can tell when I'm excited because I talk too fast. But they had 194 students and families participate in the event, and it's a lot of hard work, and so I just wanted to congratulate them, Brenda. And also, this past Thursday, a lot happened last Thursday. We I got to go down to French Lick, the ROI, the Regional Opportunity Initiative, gave their regional report, and and we were highlighted several times throughout their reports. So I was very excited about that. And then Edgewood Schools was given the STEM Innovation Award, which is a very high honor, and actually, that nomination came from one of our parents, and we got to meet him there and thank him for that that nomination. And so this is something we're very proud of because we 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 really strive to provide that STEM innovation for our students. But also pretty cool at this regional report is they had different breakout sessions, and they had panels that were set up on different topics. And we had one of our seniors, Logan Anderson, he was on a panel where they talked about the our paid internship program that several of our students participated in. And Logan spoke about his experience with Smithville, and there was also a Smithville representative there, and she just bragged and bragged about Logan, and he did such a great job representing Edgewood Schools. I don't know how these kids do it because they get up in front of people and they seem like they're calm, cool, collected, and I know I'm about as nervous as can be when I have to speak in front of people, but they they look really they do a really good job. And so I just wanted to highlight Logan. We have our fifth graders going to Bradford Woods in just a few weeks. And so that's always one of the highlights of the fifth grade year, and I'll look forward to going up and eating dinner with them one night and watching the skips. If anybody wants to go along, feel free to to let me know.
I'll probably need to do that.
Oh, yeah, it's pretty fun.
I will need to do that.
A skip night would be a really good night to do that.
Okay. Okay.
And then I just wanted to share an idea that we're working on. If you remember, as we've spoken over the last few years about Ready Schools, and we've talked about bringing in different businesses, and we talked to them about what we're doing, we talked to them about our graduate profile, we give them a tour of the ILC and the coffee shop and and the the design labs at the other schools. And we sometimes go to their location, like we went out to Cook, the Cook Plant here in Ellesville, and we talked to all the department heads. Well, we're growing such a number of partners, it's hard to go back and talk to them again, you know? So we wanted to establish a regular time, so we're we're thinking about twice a year bringing in a Ready Schools business leaders advisory team and talk to them about what we're doing in our schools to prepare our students for the workforce and get their guidance, their input. If things in the workforce change, we'll be able to keep up on that. And we also it also benefits our students when we are talking to these businesses about the experiences that our Edgewood students are receiving. And then when our students go out and they're they're applying and interviewing for jobs at these local companies, then these business leaders are already going to know what kind of education and what kind of learning experiences that future employee received in in high school and in elementary and junior high. And so we're putting together the inviting, making a list of who to invite, and it's not it's it's going to be a list of really whoever wants to come, we'll be glad to talk to them. But we definitely want to get some of the partners who we've already been working with. So I'm looking forward to having our first meeting in in June. I just wanted to share with the board a few upcoming events. We started I-Learn today, and so it's always a very important time at the EIS and the junior high. Our junior senior prom will be April 29th. There'll be all kinds of spring spring choir events and spring sports for us to attend. And then before you know it, we'll be at commencement on June 3rd for the class of 2023 graduations. Thank you, that's my report. Thank you very much. And since I still have you, Mr. Dernall, I'll have you go first for, oh, no, wait, RBB EA comments, I'm sorry, Mr. Yules.
Good to see you all. Twenty eight school days left, by the way. It's 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 getting there, the seniors feel it for sure, but we'll keep we'll keep pushing them through and get them done, even Carter. Son of Doc and Mick Hammett, Geez O'Pete. Nick's been here, he was one of my first go to people when I started 29 years ago. He was on to the math department.
Pardon me? I lost Mr. Dernall, so if Mr. Tucker can get him on.
You have to rewind now. We were going to be done by eight.
Maybe he fell asleep, who knows?
He could probably continue, couldn't he?
I'm sorry?
He could probably continue, couldn't he? Well, well, Brett's connecting.
I think Mr. Dernall might need one to know what he has to say.
Thanks, appreciate it. All right, here we go. All right, there's Mr. Yules.
Welcome back, Mr. Dernall. So I was saying Mick Hammett was always a mentor to me, just de facto, he was in my math department, always a go to guy, always very helpful, even when they asked me, of all people, to coach sixth grade basketball when I started teaching, which that was not my forte, but I'd go to mixed practices, he was doing seventh or eighth grade, and let me sit in on his practices, always helpful. Even always coaching tennis, by the old junior, you know, by the junior high when we had courts, and he was in softball, we chatted. Fast forward to him being a. Fast forward to him being an A D, as somebody said, he's everywhere all the time, so. Big shoes to fill and really he's just one of the all-time nice guys without a doubt. So we're going to miss him. He's a legend, I think. I went on a date on a State House rally last Thursday, how that happens, why it happened. In my, I want to guess fifteen years of helping out the association, something like this has only been requested of members one time and that was November twenty nineteen. And usually what happens is, just to update you, usually the legislators meet January to March or in a long year like this year when they set the budget, January through the end of April. We obviously get informed by our I S T A folks in Indy about bills that are upcoming. Hey, call your legislators, please email your legislators, tell your friends, your parents about certain issues, certain bills that could be detrimental, and those are the things we do. Or we have lobby days where we go up, a few of us try to talk to our senators or reps and those are the usual routes of communication at State House. And then as it gets later in the process, you know, that ratchets up if there are still bills out there that concern us. And this time it was, it was an all call, you know? They said, hey, anybody could come up on this day, we need to show up en masse, we have these handful of bills that are really detrimental to our profession, our kids, and that's what happened. And honestly, I was surprised, you know, I forwarded it to members and we had like over seventy-some members said, yeah, I want to go. I'm like, whoa. And for comparison, I think in November twenty nineteen, I don't have exact memory, but I think we're in the thirties that went, thirty-five, which was still a lot. So when seventy-plus wanted to go, obviously I had to talk to Dr. Sanders and everybody. And so we appreciate you making this an e-day because a lot of people couldn't go and a lot of people still can't go, they have kids, they have other things. But took a picture, sent it to Dr. Sanders and Matt and we had about sixty in the picture and another five showed up later. So it was a great showing. We were the biggest group on the floor for the longest time, well, until M C C showed up. They, they come up later with a bus, they couldn't get up there. But if you haven't been up there, it's a, it's a big main floor that opens all the way up to the, I guess you could call it a rotunda. Mr. Vocap can help me over there, that's the wrong term, but.
You got it.
It's open for three floors with rectangular balconies and, and people were lined up and all, and we were doing chants and all this stuff. The legislators were, were busy in recess and we couldn't meet any of them, even though we sent out emails. And then they recessed for most of the afternoon until most of us left. I know Senator Yoder met with a bunch of people because my counterpart, Paul Farmer in M C C, had gotten ahold of her and she's very friendly and held a, a meeting on the third floor, which was great. A lot of people went up to there for the first time and got to see the process of the right to assemble, you know? When you have something that's a big enough issue, that's what you do, you show up because you got to, you got to do something. Otherwise, if you don't do anything, you're kind of accepting what's going on. So it was a great show, a great show for R B B, so we appreciate your support in that as well and we'll see what goes from here, I guess, so. Because the session is about over. With that, like I said, twenty-eight days we're going to get our kids through. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yules. Yes, we'll start with Mr. Durnall for board member comments.
Damon, thank you for helping me get on tonight. I'm sorry about the, the Zoom meeting, or the Google meeting, I couldn't get it to work. But anyway, thank you so much, board, Dr. Sanders, Matt, thank you so much for doing what you do, Jeff. Robin, I'll be able to sign the paperwork here on the meeting later on this week and maybe first next week. So again, I just, I love this system, I think it's the best system that, that's going. But thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and sign off, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durnall. Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I want to echo, well, thanks for answering all the questions, Dr. Sanders and Mr. Irwin. I know you guys probably walked into the office this morning and saw all these questions and I appreciate, appreciate your emails, don't answer them until Monday because you take time for your family, which is important. And that's what's, that's the number one priority, take care of your family. So thanks for answering all those questions. Ditto with what Mr. Yules said, congrats to Mr. Hammett for forty-two great years and his, I mean, we go all night about all the things he's done to help this school corporation. But the one thing in his resignation letter caught my attention because it just made me think about the past was if he's leaving, if he's leaving the, the school grounds, even when he's retired, he'll still stop and check the doors. And I remember how many times he'd constantly, well, the door so-and-so was left open, like wonder who did it? And he was great about doing that, so I'm sure he will continue to be a supporter of the school and he's just a great, he's, he's impacted a lot of kids over the years. And congrats to Kelly Fowles for retiring as well from EPS and I know she's had a nice sixteen-year run. I want to thank the parents of the community for being very flexible last week with that quick e-learning day and allowing the teachers to go to the State House and, and show their support on what, what's going on with the educational bill. So again, I know that's hard for parents sometimes, but thank, thanks to them. And lastly, just a public service, be safe at the prom this year for all the kids are getting ready to head to prom. That's always a scary time of the year for the parents and administrators, so be careful. So thank you.
Mr. Demoss?
I just want to thank all the teachers that went to the rally at the State House last week. I, I was also there and I was so proud of the, the number and the presence, the way that they presented themselves, they were just terrific and thank you, Mr. Yules, for pulling it together. It looks like the, the general assembly is following their typical pattern, which is present a lot of crazy ideas and then hope at the end that sanity prevails. And it looks like we're kind of working in that position. I'm very interested in seeing where they go with the, with the budget numbers though, so, but anyway, thank you. The literacy and mental health personnel positions that we created this evening, I think those are so important in the future of our students. And I'm proud that we're able to take positive steps forward in those, in those areas. Mick Hammett is the face of Edgewood Athletics. I don't know what I'm going to do without him being around, but he has meant a lot to me and I just, the guy is a, a non-stop, how he, he must, I know how he stays thin, but he is always on the go. Good luck to the robotics team and the Nationals, that's so exciting. I loved the preschool presentation, that was great. Thanks to everybody for the donations. And finally, Logan Anderson, you hit it on the head, he sat next to me during the senior faculty games before spring break and helped me announce those and he was terrific and he's gone, I think he's going to follow that, that calling at the university level and so good luck to Logan, but he's a terrific guy, so thank you, sir.
And as always, it's very difficult to go last, although just have to echo everything that everybody else said and since it's been a long meeting, I won't go through it item by item. I think the STEM Initiative Award just is, is a great representation, robotics team, gosh, world championship, you just can't beat what's happening here at R B B. So we hope everybody can spread the good news about what we're doing here and the great things we're doing for kids. And the donations, of course, I don't want to miss that, that's always important to us. And it's great for the students too, because they know that those community members care about them as well, so it means more than the dollars, so. So with that, I'll just close the meeting and you all have a wonderful Eastman and a safe ride home.